I'd call to order the city council meeting for November 19, 2024. The time is now seven o'clock PM. We will start with the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation. Okay, the first item is roll call.
Mayor Scott Nickel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frank Gerton.
Here.
Councilmember Adam Dyer.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton Boone. Councilmember Shawna Hume.
Here.
Okay. Pass the excusal of council members, since everybody is here. Next is additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda, if any. Does anyone in council have anything they see that needs to be changed? There are none. We'll move on to approval of minutes. First is the October 22, 2024 council meeting minutes.
I have one correction. On page four, the name is Lori Endy of Lancha Circle. It should be Lori Endy. It sounds similar, so I just think that needs to be corrected.
Okay. Corrected. Two is acceptance of a resignation and authorization to advertise vacant position on the tree preservation board. This is to consider accepting Ms. Romi's resignation and authorizing staff to solicit for resumes for the newly created vacant position on the tree preservation board. City Manager Coffey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, residents gathered here and watching at home. Councilmember-elect Romi served on Member Tree Preservation Board this year. She resigned after the last meeting. Staff inquired of the two alternates if they were interested in being appointed to the unexpired voting membership position. One of them declined, and one has not responded. Therefore, staff recommends the city council accept Ms. Romi's resignation and authorize staff to solicit resumes for the newly created vacant position.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve advertising for a replacement for Susan Romi on the tree preservation board.
Yeah.
And accept her resignation.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hume, a second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Okay, now on to presentations, election results, and annual reorganization. The next item, and I remember three, is presentation to outgoing Councilmember Shawna Hume. City Manager Coffey. Have a little goodie for you. Yeah. Little present for you.
Okay. Let's go down.
And I think on behalf of council and the citizens of Indian Harbor Beach, we want to thank Shawna for her service to our city, not only as councilmember, but for the 25 years plus prior to that. So, thank you very much. Okay, the next. Next item is item number four. That is ratify the election results from the 2024 municipal elections. Swear in the newly elected city councilmember Susan Romi, elected mayor for 2024, 2025, elected deputy mayor for 2024, 25, and appoint representatives/voting delegates to various boards and organizations. We'll start off with the ratification of the election results from the 2024 municipal elections. Very, very close election. Shawna Hume had 2,333 votes, and Susan Romi had 2,409 votes. So, super, super close, super tight race, but congratulations. So now it's time for swearing in the newly elected councilmember Susan Romi. Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. I would entertain a motion to ratify the results of the election.
Make a motion to ratify the results of the election.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dyer, a second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Now, we can swear on the newly elected city councilmember Susan Romi.
I, Susan Romi. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. Or affirm. Or affirm. That I will support. That I will support. Protect and defend. Protect and defend. The Constitution and government. The Constitution and government. Of the United States. Of the United States. And of the State of Florida. And of the State of Florida. That I will. That I will. In all respects. In all respects. Observe the provision. Of the charter. And ordinances of the city. Of Indian Harbor Beach. And that I am duly qualified. To hold office. Under the Constitution. Of the state. And that I will faithfully. Perform the duties. Of councilmember. On which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Yes.
Give you a moment to get settled.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next is election of a mayor for the 2024, 2025 cycle. Just want to say I've enjoyed being mayor. I would happily continue to be mayor unless somebody else has another nomination.
Motion to approve Scott as mayor for the next year.
Second.
I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Gerton, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next is the election of a deputy mayor for 2024, 2025.
I'm glad to go ahead and serve in the future.
Deputy Mayor Gerton, continue.
I have a second. I have a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Boone. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Councilmember Romi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. And next is appointing representatives and voting delegates to various boards and organizations. City Manager Coffey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next one is representative for the South Beaches Coalition, a Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization. The current representative is Councilmember Dyer.
Adam, are you still interested in doing that?
I'd be willing to try something else, pass that along, if somebody else would like to be interested in potentially taking over that one.
I'd be glad to go ahead and take it over. I mean, we're not going to deliberate.
Okay, so, Adam, you said you would be willing to continue?
If needed, but I'm looking, yeah, I'll let Frank do it. I'm looking forward to do something, do something different.
Okay. Make a motion to appoint Frank?
Make a motion to appoint Deputy Mayor Gerton to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization representative for the South Beach Coalition.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dyer. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I have a second from Councilmember Romi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't have the trouble for. The next one, Mr. Mayor, is a voting delegate for the Space Coast League of Cities. The prior delegate was Councilmember Hume.
I'm willing to serve in that capacity.
So, I was, I was the alternate last year, and I enjoyed that. I'd be interested in taking over the voting delegate for the Space Coast.
I will pass to you then.
Okay. If, if nominated.
Do I need a motion?
I'm going to serve on the. Yeah, Space Coast League of Cities. As a voting delegate.
I have a motion. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, a second by Councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Sorry. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
The next position is the alternate voting delegate for the Space Coast League of Cities. The current delegate is Councilmember Dyer.
First of all, that's something that I've already served on for several years, so I'm, you know, I'll pass.
I wouldn't mind doing that. Jumping into that a little bit.
Make a motion to. Scott to go ahead and serve on the Space Coast League of Cities as an alternate.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Hamilton, did you vote?
Yes.
So that was a yea or a nay?
That was a yea.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Motion carries five zero.
And the last position is to delegate to the Satellite Beach Library Board liaison. The current representative is Councilmember Boone.
I would like to volunteer to be the delegate to the Satellite Beach Library Board.
I'm second.
So, we need a motion.
I'm serving the Library Board.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton. I have a second. Hammed, okay. All right, second by Councilmember. Yeah, it's a little light, but we can hear you. It's all right. Second by Councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it. Done with the boards. Okay. All right, next is city manager's report. City Manager Coffey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First item is a notification of use of contingency. On November 6, I signed a quote for $11,079 to install a canopy over the new Public Works Administrative Office's entrance at the rear of City Hall. This was done to decrease the amount of water that's getting in when it rains heavy and to help residents understand that's the public entrance. Additionally, a power pole in Algonquin Sports Complex owned by the city was damaged during Hurricane Milton, and we've replaced that at a cost of $13,300. Staff is in the process of submitting an insurance claim and also FEMA public assistance for that. The updated city manager's contingency is attached. Comprehensive plan update. In approximately 2020, it appears staff inadvertently failed to update an element of the city's comprehensive plan that included a state-mandated private property section. Hence, the city is no longer in compliance, and staff is working with our planning consultant to identify potential firms to help staff in the planning and zoning board to update the plan. We will present a proposal at a future meeting regarding the cost and options. Police radio replacement project update. The FY25 budget contains $28,000 to continue the phased replacement of vehicle radios and PACS sets. Last week, Chief Butler signed a bid for $27,500 as attached. Update on contract negotiations for audit services. City Attorney Bone and I reached a tentative agreement with CRI on contract language. That proposed agreement will be on the next council meeting for your consideration. Per the city charter, the October revenue and expenditure reports are attached. Folks looking at this who don't understand the cycle of local government, it's not uncommon to get very little in in October because November starts property tax receipts, which is approximately 55% to 60% of our general fund. DEP ARPA-funded stormwater project updates. The three projects have been ranked by the evaluation committee. Garcia Civil Contractors was the highest-ranked firm for the Ronnie Drive Project, and Atlantic Development of Cocoa Beach was the highest-ranked firm for Alhambra and Atlantic. Mr. Bone and I will be working with those two vendors over the next few weeks to get proposed contracts for your consideration, hopefully at the December 10 meeting. Algonquin Sports Complex Expansion Project Request for Proposal Update. Proposals are due at 2:00 PM on Thursday. First evaluation committee will open, meeting will happen Friday morning, which will open the proposals. Tensive agenda for the next meeting. We have public hearing and second readings on the capital improvement element update and the paid beach parking fees and enforcements, multiple award of contracts as previously mentioned, the proposed budget calendar for FY26, proposal for security cameras at Gleason Park and beach parks, and authorization to dispose of more fixed assets. And I've listed, and it's available on our website, the upcoming board events throughout the end of the year. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next, city attorney's report.
Nothing, sir.
And next is council comments. Does anyone in council have anything they wish to say? We'll start with Deputy Mayor Gerton.
Just some minor comments, but just, you know, I just want to go ahead and acknowledge that our staff, our leadership of city managers just had the Gleason Park and just stellar performance there. Took care of the construction area, took care of all the grass and everything else. And I had a lot of comments when I was over there in the morning from people that thought the park just looked fantastic. So, that was, that was a good way to start that Saturday off. U.S. flags on display in Gleason Park. I noticed that we have in there Space Force, I think, that type of thing. You know, we started getting on, on different things. I think we need to kind of a way to visit when we add on things. The only reason why I say that, you know, it started off as a project at one time with Mark Ryan that we put it in, and we didn't seem to have that many flags. But it's like anything else, you know, we, we started with the benches out there. We started with the bricks. We started with the, you know, different things that we've added on there, and everybody wants a piece of it, you know? If they like it, they want a piece of it. But we have to, I think, establish a way for, you know, if we have room for something and what it is. That's what I'd like to see us address that in the future. I just noticed something. I know it's minor, but it isn't minor. We had a golf cart traveling down South Patrick on the east side of our sidewalk, going right on down, and that was fine. You know how wide the sidewalk is, and you know how wide the golf cart is, and it wasn't that one of our golf carts. So, because we don't have golf carts. And, but anyway, in the other direction, we had some people on bikes going the other direction, and I was just waiting for something to happen. I'm glad we didn't have a dog and people walking or somebody jogging. We need to kind of, I think, come up with a plan that we kind of educate our, our city people every now and then what's okay and what's not okay. Because after it happens, the accident happens, it's too late. It's just too late. We can't address it now. So, we just need to address it now, and if we come up with a solution where the speed limit changes or something like that, and they can move on to the streets, I'm all for it. The last thing is, we have Delma Harold Yance, who's just passed away. He's been a long councilperson for down Malabar there, and his. Yeah, Mayor Grand Valcarria, his day is 11:24 from 12 to 1:00. They're having a service down there, and it'd be nice if we could go ahead and be part of that service. And that's all I have. I think it's been a great week, two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Boone, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do, and thank you for your patience with me. Last Friday, I was lucky enough to, fortunate enough to be part of the Veterans Day celebration at Ocean Beach Elementary. That was quite an experience for me, and dealing with veterans from all different horizons. My service started back at September 11, 1967. It was, like I said, a wonderful experience, but it had me think, you know, is this possibly something that we should think about doing for the residents and veterans of Indian Harbor Beach and have it in the park with the same type of setup as was at Ocean Beach? Like I said, we have a lot of veterans. And I think it'd be a wonderful way to highlight Indian Harbor Beach in particular. And have a presentation in Gleason Park. So that concludes my comments. But again, thank you guys for your patience.
Of course. Thank you, Hamilton.
Yes.
Next, we'll go to new council member Susan Rome.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm honored and excited to be here tonight. And thank you to the council for welcoming me. And thank you to the people who elected me. I'm here as a voice for the residents and will always be accessible and open to ideas. So please feel free to reach out. And thank you again for electing me. I'm going to do my best. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyer.
Just wanted to echo what Frank said about the, the art show. I think this was the largest that I remember. I mean, there was parking all around and people, it was a great showing, you know, vendors all the way around the entire lake. It was, it was a good, good event. And also the trunk retreat was another, another big hit. That was a huge success. You know, each year, these, these events keep growing and growing. And I think the city does an excellent job of, you know, putting all those long hours and putting those together for the community. So just wanted to say good job.
Okay. Thank you. And I do not have any comments at this time. All right, we're going to move on to public comments on agenda items only. So normally, when people, the public speaks, it's at the end of the, at the end of the agenda. However, I know there's an item on the agenda, which has to do with paid beach parking. And it would be appropriate this time for, to start having members of the public speak on that item. This is the slot where it would happen. Otherwise, you wait till the end of the meeting, and we've already taken action on it, and it doesn't really do much good. So it's important that we hear your thoughts and your opinions on this subject especially. So what I'm only going to do that for the ones that are, have to do with paid beach parking. The rest of the public comments or the speaker cards will be at the end of the meeting where they would typically be. When I call your name, please come up, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. And I do enforce that. So you might be mid-sentence, and I'll politely say thank you, and that's your three minutes. So let me go ahead and do that. If anybody wants to speak on that particular item, please fill out a speaker card and turn it into the city card. So first person that is up is Nonine Zimba. Hope I got the pronunciation right. On paid beach parking. State your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name is Nonine Zimba. I live at 1113 Stephen Patrick Avenue, Indian Harbor Beach, Florida. I didn't know the time was going to start when I was given my information. I have a petition here with about 100 names on it, Indian Harbor Beach residents who are against paid parking. So I'll deliver that to you. I wanted to say that I was, last time I was here was the workshop on March 26th. And the workshop itself is mislabeled on the website, so it's hard to find. But I was able to contact, I think, the city manager, and I think Sue Frank was able to change that. But I also want to bring up that the minutes of that meeting, I'm asking that they, that they be amended to indicate that there was a large majority of people who emailed and spoke at that time who were residents of Indian Harbor Beach, are Indian residents of Indian Harbor Beach, are against paid beach parking. Also, at that meeting, Mayor Nickel, you had said, because of the response against, that you would table the issue until the county considered paid beach parking. I, I under, that was, that was said, that was said, but I understand that that's not a, that's not necessarily an action. Okay, that was just something that was said. Now, this was before the meetings were being recorded. Okay, I want to say that the, that would, I'll also provide context for the other comments during other meetings. I noticed that the, the staff report for the ordinance and the impact, the financial impact, does have typos in it. That usually means that it was rushed to be done. So I just want to bring that up because what some other people had said during the workshops, including the councils, that we want to make sure that we do this right. We, we want to find out what the city wants. And so there was also some talk of doing a survey that was when the meetings were recorded. However, that survey never happened. So that's why I did go into the community to talk to residents and put this petition together. So I, I can read a few things from the petition since I have a few seconds left. Local businesses would suffer with loss of patronage, which they rely upon during peak times to financially sustain them throughout the year. Our family members and friends who live only a few miles away, to a few blocks away, would no longer be able to join us without experiencing the financial burden. During this tough economic time, families who come to refresh on a budget will be disenfranchised and endure this added economic hardship. Our freedom to access our beach parks without restraint and responsibly plan our own parking needs will be taken away, and it will have a chilling effect upon our visitors and residents alike in what has been a kind and generous community. So thank you for your time for listening to me. I was not keeping up with the, with this, with the other workshops, but I want to make sure our community could speak now.
I would like to add one thing to that. I did not say that we would table the item until the county made a decision on paid parking or not. I simply said that it wouldn't surprise me that in the future, if the county elected to go to a paid parking scenario. Okay. The next person is Deb Plag. Did I get that right? Plag, Plag?
I'll be brief. I'm Debbie Plag. I live at 111 Marticia Way. We've been in this city for over 30 years and have enjoyed living here and the freedom of the beaches. We've moved from other areas that were not, that were not so lucrative. So now we're faced with being charged for beach parking. I too thought it was tabled and was negligent in not following up. I did try to find the minutes, could not find them. I just would like to voice my opinion about beach parking not being free to the general public and to small families that live in our area. And we do have two areas that could be carted off with maybe a code that would be maybe a little less expensive. And at least would you give us some idea, three choices maybe, from what might be the charges and try to keep them as low as possible? I worry about a third party. It's a for-profit company, and I'm sure that for that reason, they're going to have to charge maybe more than they should. I just had my kids come visit, and it's, I think, $5 an hour in Cocoa Beach. So I, and that's where they like it. So up I went and brought, and came back and dropped them off so that they wouldn't have that expense. I'd like to be able to use my beaches that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Greg McMinn.
Good evening. My name is Greg McMinn. I live at 213 Marion Street here in Indian Harbor Beach. Lived here since 2017. I want to express my opinion that I'm against the paid parking scheme. And I sent a letter to each of the council members. Sorry, I only got one response back from our former council member. But raised several questions. I don't know what the answers are yet, but here's the upshot of it. If what we're going to pay for the, the parking scheme, what we're going to pay to contract that out exceeds the revenue, the folks here are going to pay for it. City, city's going to pay for it, and they're going to pass that along to the residents. And I don't think it's worth it. I don't think it's a value add for our, for our city. So I'll give the, the remaining two minutes back. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Blake.
For letting me talk. Steve Blake, I'm a 120 enclave, Indian Harbor Beach. You know, the first question I wanted to, to say was a question I asked back in March when I got up and talked. What's the problem that we're trying to solve here by having paid parking? Does anybody have an answer? Because I asked that question back in March, and nobody had an answer.
Well, you want to use up your time to do that?
You know, I mean, I, I, if you had the answer quick, you would have said it. And I'll, I'll echo what was said before.
No, I'll, I'll jump right in.
That back in, that back in March. Well, I'll take my time back now. You, you had your chance. Because back in, back in March, you, I, you did look me in the eye, and you did say that you were going to table it until the county, until the county took some sort of action. And, and a couple of you said that.
The county is not considering it at all. There's no consideration in the county.
All right, it's, I got my time, right? And, and you also said that you would have, if there was any workshops or any, any, you know, open forums, that it would be known. And, you know, it wasn't until, I think, last week that someone, you know, notified me that, that this was happening tonight. And, and then we come to find out that there were a couple of, a couple of workshops that happened, what, I guess, June, and then back in October. I don't think they were very heavily populated because I don't think very many people knew about it. But, but honestly, you know, I'll, I'll repeat some of the things that I said back in March. I've been in the area here for a lot of years. My kids were born here. I've also lived a lot of other places around the country. I've traveled a lot of places around the world. And, and last time I heard people say, well, other people do it, and it's just a fact of life. We have to pay for parking. I think that's a lot of BS. I came back to the area because it's a nice family area. You know, we love the feel of it. You know, we love the Indian Harbor Beach. It's, it's, it's people who live and work here. There's not as many tourists. I, I love tourists, right? I'm a tourist when I go places. I love it. But, but I go back to the, the question of what are we trying to solve? And, you know, I hear people say that there's a concern about, about not having resident parking. Having people pay for parking is not going to, not going to guarantee a spot. When my, when my kids and, and my grandkids come here, they're not going to be able to go to the beach that they love. You know, I've only got half a minute to go here, but, you know, a couple of the things that I wanted to share, you know, I'll go about the, the studies about cost. I don't think we have a budget problem, so I don't think we're, we're trying to make money here. And I've also talked to, you know, I've got feedback from people in other towns around here. In fact, last weekend, I talked to somebody from Indian Atlantic. And, and he thinks that the amount of money he has to pay for parking is a joke. It, it ruins his experience. So he was up, he came to our beaches because it's a much more welcoming environment. You know, look, I, you know, I apologize for the back and forth, but at the end of the day, I'm just disappointed in, in the whole process because it, it, it really, it wasn't what was talked about back in March. But, you know, thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Next is Tom Clark.
I like to always open this up with saying aloha. Means love, respect, and thank you for you all serving, you know, taking the time. Civil servants, you actually serve us, and you willing to take that time. So I'm willing to use a couple of seconds for that. I want to ask, how many people in here are, oh, I'm sorry, Tom Clark and 1561 Merritt Island, or South Banana River Drive, Merritt Island? 32952.
Go ahead.
Okay. How many of you are not in this, from the town here that have come to this meeting? Whoa, I'm the only one. That's what I wanted. I wanted to be an outside voice, so you guys get an outside perspective. And I say aloha in the reference that I have a property in Hawaii. And I've been very involved in Hawaii with helping youth. And one of the most amazing things I see over there is that every beach is free. And it's very expensive there. There's properties, there's resorts that have tried to steal the, the beach, but it's never worked. And the most beautiful thing is every weekend, what do you see at the beach? You see families together. And it's just, they have their cookouts, they have their dogs running on the beach. It's just so beautiful. And I've been to Australia, and it's the same thing too. And I've been to a couple other parts in the world. And I grew up in Maryland, Delaware too, where there's beach parking. And bottom line, where there's been fee parking in Cocoa Beach, for example, it's just the kids, the young people do not come, you know? Like when I live in Cocoa Beach and I come, it's mainly Orlando people that are paying for parking. So they actually, it chases the locals away, and it brings in the outsiders, and they're the only ones paying. And it just does a disservice to our youth and our families because, you know, you all know, when you're stressed out, you want to go to the beach. If you have a problem with your marriage, or your son or your daughter, that walk on the beach is so valuable. And do you want to pull out and worry about if you're going to get a ticket in an hour or two hours when you're in a deep conversation? No, it's horrible. And if you do, and you've been in a stressful situation, and I witnessed it at Satellite Beach, there was a wife crying, there was a husband in rage seeing a boot on his vehicle, and the kids were crying. Do you want that for Indian Atlantic? I don't think so. You can find some extra money somewhere else, you know? It's just, it's not worth the taxation. And I'm telling you, this town is a beautiful town, and I was honored to paint a mural here. And the meaning of that mural is impacting other people in life. And it's important, everything we do, you do, we do, it impacts our lives. And I just beg and plead, don't take the beach. I hear my dau, my daughter drives all the way down from Merritt Island to meet her friend standing on the beach because there's no charge. So thanks for letting me share, and it was an honor to be before all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your name again? I always do. Alex Kaplowicz. Kaplowicz, both?
Hey, everyone. Alex Kaplowicz, 211 McEnobie Court, IHB. Thank you to city council for continuing to work through this issue. This is the third or fourth meeting we've had on this topic, and I've spoken, I think, at every one. I want to reaffirm my support for a resident beach parking program, which, to my understanding, is exactly what council is proposing with this ordinance. And just to clear the confusion, I've heard people talk about residents paying to park. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about residents getting a pass to park and non-residents contributing. So just, just to clear that up, because I've heard a few people say that, and that's not what we're talking about here. So IHB's proposed program will implement the best practices of our neighboring beachside communities who have already implemented beach parking programs. And because the proposed program is self-funded, it won't cost taxpayers anything, just to clear that up. As an IHB resident and taxpayer, it's really a no-brainer to me. This is our best option as a community. And for those of you that, you know, are against it, please try to go to the beach on a busy weekend, especially if you, if you have kids or grandkids or anything like that, please try to go on a busy weekend. And for those that are against as well, I ask you to support your claims with actual data because we went over actual data at the last three meetings that apparently people weren't at. And where's the data showing that local businesses, businesses would be affected? And do you really think a family unwilling to pay $6 to park at our access would actually spend money at our businesses? It's $6. At the previous three meetings I attended on this topic, there was a large turnout of residents in support of a beach parking, parking program for residents with almost no opposition. And at the meeting earlier in the year, there, when there was opposition, most speakers were not actually residents or people that don't actually go to the beach. I'd also like to call out the fact that young IHB families that are most affected by this lack of available beach parking are not able to attend every single meeting we've had on this topic, and many were at the last three meetings. So as I stated before, I think it's wonderful that non-residents love to enjoy our beach accesses and use its amenities, but the reality is that all other beachside communities are charging for parking now, and it's not unreasonable to ask non-residents to help contribute to our city. I want to thank our council members for continuing to move forward on this topic. This is what the majority of taxpaying IHB residents who actually go to the beach have been asking for meeting after meeting. So thank you guys for your work on this.
Thank you. Next is Nick Kaplowicz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nick Kaplowicz, 20 Navajo Circle. I'm a resident. I used to support beach parking. I used to support beach parking. I still support beach parking. I'm not sure why this has to take this long and it's that much of an issue. I feel like for people who think this isn't an issue, all you have to do is go to the beach when it's busy and try to find a parking spot. The other thing that I would like to make very clear to this group is there's no such thing as free parking unless you are a non-resident right now. We are paying for our police, we are paying for our public service people, we're paying for lights, we're paying for... It seems like every time I look at this, we're paying for something else. Every meeting we come in here, we're going to spend all this money. And it's my money and I can't even park at my own beach. I take an issue with that. So I get it, like we want to be, you know, we want to be friendly as a community and welcoming and we want everyone to come and enjoy this stuff. But let me paint another picture of the reality of the beach. I went there yesterday to go surfing in Millennium and I had to call the police on a woman who's just crawling around in the middle of the parking lot, all messed out or something like that. There was a homeless person sleeping underneath the bridge. And, you know, it's like, come on, guys, we got to do something. There's a lot of population, there's a lot of population here. The population is growing. Everyone else around us has done this. It's something we are forced to do. We're going to have to do this. Otherwise, I'm just going to keep spending money. We're going to keep spending money for everybody else to enjoy a beach. So I'd like to see something happen and I don't want to see it happen nine months from now. I want to see it happen soon. I want, like, I shouldn't have to come four times to a meeting to keep getting on everyone's case and have non-residents come and people who obviously don't go to a beach come up here and dictate policy. If, if that's what people really want, fine, then let's get your petitions out and let's do it. But I, I would guarantee you that the majority of this population wants to see their community at their beach and not transients leaving garbage, okay? So I'm sorry, but it's just the reality of the situation. And, you know, I hate, hate to be the guy that brings it up, but that's where we're at. So thank you very much and I'd like to see this passed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nina Shay.
I'm Nina Shay. I live at 107 Freddie Street. I just, first I wanted to say congratulations to Susan Room. I think she's wonderful. She's a lovely woman. She's got children in the schools and I think she's going to be a great asset to the council. So I'm very happy that we have her. Secondly, I'm for public parking and us charging out of people that don't live here. I think, I agree with this gentleman here, but I don't want to see boots on cars. I don't think, I think that's wrong. And I've heard of Satellite Beach having problems with that. Also, putting a boot on somebody's car and you have an emergency, I think that's terrible. Plus I've heard that people have gotten charged for parking down there that were residents that had passes and something wasn't right. So I think if we did something like that, we have to have a sticker on the, a sticker for somebody's car or a placard like for wheelchair parking or something so that the residents here do have the right to park on the beach and won't get charged or won't accidentally get a boot because I don't like the idea of a boot at all. I think that's terrible. A ticket maybe or something, but... So I like the idea because I like going to our beach and it is very crowded. And if we're the only community beachside that doesn't have paid parking, then I think we're going to have a real problem. So thank you very much and congratulations, Susan.
Thank you. Next is Larry Shay.
I thank you. Um, I want to congratulate Susan also. So she's going to be a huge asset to us. Um, I would, that was my wife just speaking. And I'd like to, I would like to come out and say, I am, I'd like to keep the beaches free. That, that said, I would also love to see a better plan than our neighbors to the north. I think they made a, a huge embarrassment of themselves doing it the way they do. If, if there's a, a good way to do this, I'm all for it. But I just don't see, I don't see that we've actually put anything forward saying how this is going to be implemented. And I, I also agree with the man that said, "Are we fixing a problem?" You know, the people who trash the beach trash the beach, whether they live here or not. They, they have no respect for it. So it's, if, if you, if people are paying to come to the beach, maybe they'll, they'll feel entitled. I, I can trash this, I can leave my trash here, they'll pick it up. I just paid for it. Anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Nutt.
A few of the previous speakers kind of stole my thunder, Nick. I appreciate what you had... David Nutt, 105 Anona Place. I am a resident and not a non-resident. Most of the people that I've seen at some of these meetings that were protesting the paid parking, 80% of those, I was there, were non-residents that were protesting it, which you don't have a dog in a fight, sorry. One of the things I'd like to make clear is that the attendance of, other than that, was that the council has been very diligent about trying to make a plan, a plan, excuse me, that's not impactful against residents. I want to make sure that the residents also know that they're not going to pay. The council has already made it very clear that they don't want residents to pay. If they do, then they'll have a problem with me. But other than that, we have not just the trash, we have the homeless. We wouldn't have had the shark killer that camped out at the beach be an issue for us to have to pass an ordinance if we had paid parking there for him because he's a non-resident, he's homeless. So that never would have happened. I'm amazed at the ignorance that some people here, like the petition. The petition that was being sold at the park during the art festival was being sold as paid parking for all. That's not the case. So I want to make sure whoever signed the petition may want to rethink their signature on there. Uh, it's been made very clear to a lot of people that, um, it's going to, what, what it's going to solve. Well, I don't want our beaches becoming the overflow for the other paid parking beaches. And that's what's happened. It's become an overflow. So we don't have the parking for those, and I know a majority of the people that are in this room tonight do not go to the beach on a regular basis like I know Nick does or Susan does or Adam, as far as that goes. I know for a fact that they don't go as often and they see the residual effect of how bad the parking is every time they go. So I don't understand how we're going to be able to rectify this without having some type of a plan in place that includes paid parking for non-residents. So, so let's make it clear, non-residents. Thank you.
Okay, last on the list is Ann Hicks.
My name is Ann Hicks and I live at 1870 Long Island Drive in Viera, okay? And the reason I am here is I'm a volunteer for Florida shorebirds and I'm also with the North Atlantic Right Whale Organization. So I was on your beach Sunday and I was talking to people and I was asking them to sign a petition because most of them there were not residents. I had no problem finding a parking space. Everybody came and went. I met wonderful people from Orlando. They did not litter, as I was told. And they were also in the pavilion, which would mean that if you had paid parking, besides renting the pavilion, the people would have to pay that were not residents of your city. So I just want to say that while I was there, the only person that came and said something that was negative was a couple. They left on a golf cart. They told me that this was a done deal, that there was no need in doing a petition and that, um, there was just no need in doing it. And I just want to speak up, the ocean is free and the shores are free. I live in Brevard County, we pay taxes, we fix your sand and that's it. And if you don't know about the whale season, it starts now. And I was blessed to see halo with their calf one year. So again, you're limiting us. I can't afford to pay $3.50 to go look at the water and see if I can find a whale when I get a call. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I should have, could I mention that I mentioned surfers and beach people that were also there? So again, there's a lot of people that are on the beach.
Thank you. All right, I do have one more speaker. Colleen Blake.
Hello, everyone. Colleen Blake, 120 Enclave. I did not plan on speaking tonight. However, after listening to some of these very impassioned speeches, I would like to speak up on a couple notes. First of all, I don't think paid parking will solve the issue of the homeless and women messed out crawling around the parking lot. I'm guessing she didn't drive here in a car. So I, I don't think that's our problem. I do feel that I've learned a little more insight by some of the speakers tonight. It seems as though some in this group would like a private spot where they can zip in in their exact window of time that they want to enjoy the beach. I take offense at, because of my Irish skin, I don't look like I'm at the beach every day. I do wear sunscreen. So I, I am a bit offended by the comment that most of these people do not go every day. I think that was wrong. And I apologize that some of these people feel that they've had to pound this at four consecutive meetings. My husband and I didn't know about the last couple of meetings. So we're here tonight to discuss it. I do think that we shouldn't rush to judgment. I think this is something bigger than just the people in the room. And I think there's a lot of Indian Harbor Beach residents that aren't even aware that this is a problem. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Later in the agenda will be the, the beach paid parking item and we'll discuss, have more discussion about that at that time. There's no unfinished business, we're on to new business item number six, public hearing and second reading ordinance number 2024-03, which is the revised noise ordinance. This is to hold a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 2024-03 on the second reading. I will read it into the record ordinance number 2024-03. An ordinance of the city of Indian Harbor Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending chapter eight, article two, noise standards and regulations, providing for severability, repeal, codification, and an effective date. City manager, coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. City Council first held workshop on this on May 21st, went through many iterations. On October 22nd, the city council approved on first reading the ordinance with two changes being made. Changed amplified music maximum level from 65 dB to 60 dB. And subsequent to the meeting, um, specific language was removed based on advice of City Attorney Bone that it was inadvertently left in as far as the language of quote, "using or operating any, for any purpose, any amplified sound between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 PM of any day is prohibited if it exceeds a maximum of 50 dB." A business impact estimate is attached and was posted on the website in accordance with Florida statutes. The resolution specifying that the way the noise will be measured is listed later in this agenda. Staff recommends council adopt on second reading ordinance number 202403.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up for public comment. I do have a speaker card here from Marion Dunlevy. I presume you'd wish to come up and speak now? State your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Marion Dunlevy. I live at 121 Launches Circle. On behalf of several owners, I want to thank you all for lowering the decibel level to 60. Ms. Hume, Mr. Gerton, Mayor Nichols, and Mr. Boone. It has made a huge difference to our life and our quality of life. The one time I've heard music that was unacceptable, I looked out the window and there was already the police there. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Does any one in council have any comments?
I, uh, just want to say that I, I do appreciate the clarity that we put in at the, at the bottom of the agenda, about three minutes rule. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I feel like, once again, this has taken way too long to get something on the books. So with the clarity of the three readings exceeding that decimal, decimal level, I could, uh, I could support that and then potentially revisit it if it does create a bunch of further issues moving forward.
Is that a motion?
So I would just, yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution. Or the ordinance, sorry.
Second. All right. I have a motion by council member Dyer, a second by deputy mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
All right. Been a long time.
Okay, item number seven. Public hearing and second reading ordinance number 2024-09, fiscal year 25, capital project rolling forward budget amendment. This is a public hearing and consideration to consider adopting on second reading ordinance number 2024-09, amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget by rolling forward unexpendited project budgets from fiscal year 2023, 2024. I will read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 2024-09. An ordinance amending budget ordinance number 2024-06 for fiscal year October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, by changing certain amounts shown as anticipated operating revenues and expenditures resulting in an overall increase of $3,503,000 in the general fund and an increase of $2,207,000 in the stormwater fund, an increase of $1,799,968 in the American Rescue Plan Act Fund and providing for severability and an effective date. City manager, coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This, as the title of the ordinance indicates, this is rolling forward projects that were incom, not completed last year. The general fund has a very sizable increase due to the way grant projects are funded. We received 3.5 million in grant funding last year and we budgeted all that. We made some expenditures, but we didn't receive any revenue. And so that's why there's only 3.5 revenues and there's a reserve at the, at the bottom to balance that. Additionally, the ARPA fund project is a similar thing, that we budgeted the majority of the money last year and instead of rebudgeting it this year to make someone looking at the budget think you have 1.8 million in one year, 1.8 million in year two, you have 3.6 million when you really only have 1.8 million. This therefore brings forward the balance of the ARPA project of funding for the Gleason, for the Algonquin Sports Project. Council approved the ordinance on first reading on October 22nd. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 202409 on second reading.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to come up and speak on ordinance number 2024-09? Please step forward, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Actually, I motion to approve ordinance number 24-09. Actually, I motion to approve ordinance number 24-09.
Second.
Second.
A motion by council member Gerton, deputy mayor Gerton, second by council member Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Move this thing.
Item number eight is first reading ordinance number 2024-10, comprehensive plan capital improvement element update. This is for consideration of approving on first reading ordinance number 2024-10, updating the capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan. I'll read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance of the city of Indian Harbor Beach, Brevard County, Florida, updating the five-year schedule of capital improvements of the city's comprehensive plan as mandated by the Florida statutes sections 163.3177, subparagraph three, subparagraph B, providing for conflict severability and effective date. City manager coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As council is well aware, the adoption of the fiscal year 25 budget that we started last month began back in February with the city council giving staff the strategic input, going through review of future five-year revenues and projects with the submittal of a budget, and then approval of the tax rate and budget. The state statute requires the city to annually update the five-year capital improvement schedule within the comp plan. This ordinance accomplishes that. Last week, the planning and zoning board reviewed this and voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve ordinance 2024-10 on first reading. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Council have any comments, or would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 2024-10.
I second the motion.
A motion by deputy mayor Gerton, second by council member Romy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Excuse me, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're still, you're a little.
Can you hear me clear?
You are. Your voice is a little delayed coming into us, though.
No, but it's loud.
We wait for you.
I think it's.
Okay.
All right.
All right, you're good. All right, item number nine, first reading ordinance number 2024-11, paid beach parking for non-residents. This is consider approving on first reading ordinance number 2024-11, establishing a paid parking program for non-residents at city-operated beach parks. Ordinance number 2024-11, an ordinance of the city of Indian Harbor Beach, Brevard County, Florida, creating a new article three, chapter 19, Indian Harbor Beach City Code, to be entitled Beach Parking Fee Program, providing intent, establishing a beach parking fee program, establishing restricted beach park and access maintenance fund, providing for the selection of a third-party vendor to manage the program, providing for enforcement, providing for conflict severability, and an effective date. City manager coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting on October 22nd, city council voted to approve a contract with PCI Municipal Services to administer a paid parking program. On the screens, I'm going to flip back to the agenda memo from the last meeting because I detailed the elements of the program, and I thought the residents in attendance would have, could appreciate this. Free paid park, free parking for residents who register with PCI. Paid parking of $3 an hour or $15 a day for non-residents. PCI will retain 100% of the citation fees, and will pay the city 45% of all parking fees collected. Non-payment citation of $65 will be issued for folks who don't pay their fees, which is a $50 citation and a parking all-day fee of $15. That goes up to a total of $115 if not paid within 14 days. If still not paid, PCI will mail the notice of unpaid citations to the DMV, and folks will not be able to renew their registration on their vehicles for their tags until they are paid. This program does not use boots. It is a citation-only. To discourage an inadvertent boot, because when we developed this, Satellite Beach was still using, is still using their boot program. They are considering moving away from that. We included language in the contract that the council approved at the last meeting that if they inadvertently booted someone in the city parking lot, there's a fee that they would pay the city to discourage them from making the mistake. The proposal was a two-year agreement. There is no money upfront for the city. There is a penalty for the city's early termination. There is, as council, attorney Bone just mentioned, and there is no towing. So it is, it's the same vendor as Satellite Beach is using, but we believe a much better program. The ordinance before the city council tonight includes those fees mentioned and language enabling PCI to issue tickets on behalf of the city and report the information to DMV. Therefore, staff recommends the city council approve on first reading ordinance number 202411, establishing fees and penalties for non-resident paid beach parking.
Okay.
I have a question.
Council member Boone.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Like you said, those, the tow. Does that also include those that have, on handicapped spots, but have the placard, the handicap license plate?
Council member Boone, that would, that is not part of the PCI contract, but that is something IHB would take care of.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
So we've held six city council meetings on this subject. We've been doing this since March 12th. We've also had three workshops on this. So it's, it's been pretty thoroughly discussed. You know, I have always said, I mean, I, I've been, I've waffled back and forth on this one a little bit. I mean, this one has been a tough one. Still is a tough one. You know, I've always said that I wanted to make sure that we had a good idea of representation of the residents of the city. And I don't know that we get that with these meetings, because there's a small group here relative to our population. We don't have everyone's opinion. As a matter of fact, the first, I believe it was the first meeting we had, there was a lot of people here that were against it. And yes, there were a lot of non-resident folks that spoke, but there were residents here as well that spoke. And there wasn't a lot in terms of people showing up to support it. But then the tables turned, and each meeting had primarily folks who supported the paid parking. So, you know, I have, I do have a concern, I will tell you that, that, that we may not be getting, you know, everybody sent a ton of emails in, there was petition, both for and against. The majority of the emails that I saw were against the paid parking. I saw the petition. There, I do have some concerns about the petition itself, one of which there's zero mention of the parking being free to residents of Indian Harbor Beach. And as one of the speakers said, I believe it was Mr. Nutt, you know, those folks that signed this may not have known that. I mean, it's not presented in the language of this. I don't know if it was conveyed to them or not. So it makes the petition a little bit suspect. Can't necessarily rely on it. Though it's a little concerning. There's a couple other things in here. It says many other cities in our county and state do not charge beach parking. Yes, they do. All the beach cities in this county charge parking. I'm sorry, Cape Canaveral the exception. It's Cape Canaveral and us. That's not a city, but Sebastian, that's unincorporated Brevard County. It's not a city. So Brevard County is not a, I'm talking about cities. I'm an incorporated cities or towns. We are the only one left that does not, other than Cape Canaveral. You're correct on. Okay, I'm speaking right now. Please, please, let me, let me, let me speak. So there's, there's not a bunch that are still free. So again, there's, says startup costs are thousands of dollars. That's untrue. There will be no startup cost to this at all. So my only point on this has to do with, there's just, some of the information on here is not quite right. Plain and simple. I'm not saying it's a bad petition. I'm simply saying that's what was presented to the folks that signed this. So these are things to consider. Again, just, let me get to where I'm going with this. So we've been at this for a long time. We've been talking about this. There have been multiple public meetings about this. However, I will say that, you know, we have, we have what I see as three choices tonight. We as council can go ahead and vote on this ordinance. We can vote to table this ordinance again. Or, I shouldn't say table this ordinance again, but we can vote to table it for further discussion. Or, and this is a long haul, and I know some people wouldn't be happy with this, that are for the paid parking. Or, we can take it to the people to vote on via referendum. That's a possibility. So I just want to say, you know, we always have to consider all possibilities and avenues to go as a council. And that's one of them. Again, the folks that are for the paid parking, they may not like that, but it is one of the options, just like voting against it would be one of the options as well. So I do want to throw that out there as something we could do as a council. I'll leave it at that for my comments for now. Deputy mayor Gerton.
I've been on council for a while now, and this is probably one of the top three items that our city has addressed while I've been here for the last 12 years. So, and initially, when we first started, I was against it. But now I look at it, and the problems that occurred, and of course, the people that went ahead and had conversation, we are looking for a solution. This is just a two-year evaluation, a two-year test. If it doesn't work, okay, and you're unhappy, we get rid of it. It's ten years. It's all rules, it's two rules. We're not locking up for more than that. And I think both sides have a good argument, both sides. Okay? But this is a way we could go ahead and find out which way works the best for this city in this situation, because we are, we are inviting people from other cities to use our parking spaces. And our residents are just losing air, losing the ability to park. We have people that park there that are homeless, theoretically, okay? Use a spot for all day. Okay? So the paid parking, I'm, I'm, you know, for people that visit there, I'm not looking to go ahead and, and make a ton of money for our city. But paid parking, whether it's $3 or $4, whatever, some people's want five. Okay? But this is a way to go ahead and evaluate the situation. Two years down the road, we'll look at it, and we'll just say, this went down, this went down, and this went down. And we gave it an opportunity. We're open-minded, and I understand the person from Hawaii, you know, that's great. But this is being valuation.
Council member Boone.
Yes, sir. Both of you have pointed out some, some good information in that this has been ongoing issue of multiple public meetings. The other thing is that I also found the petition to be suspect in things it didn't mention and things it did. One thing I do know, after speaking with people that use the beach a lot, is that it's almost impossible to get a spot. It seems to me that, as Frank mentioned, this is a two-year test project that costs us no money. And possibly will provide spaces which will be free to Indian Harbor Beach residents to park. So I think it's, it's something that really needs consideration in that what, what is going on right now does not work. That's it. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Council member Romy.
I do agree with what council member Gerton and Boone just said. We've had many workshops and meetings, and I've been at all of them, and they have been very well attended. And at this point, I do think we should just move forward.
Okay, thank you. Council member Boone. I mean, sorry. I'm tired. Long night. Council member Dyer.
I just want to say thank you for coming out and voicing your opinion and, you know, letting your concerns be, you know, out here on the table. And we were, we're definitely listening to the concerns. The, the things I also want to state is, like, we've previously stated, we've been working, the city's been working on this for eight months. They've, they've repeatedly, the chief of police, the city manager, Ori, they've repeatedly asked all the surrounding cities what, what they use, what, what vendor they use, tickets, inflammation, all the, all that stuff. And I feel like the city did a thorough job of coming up with a product that has no cost to our current residents. And it, and we also have adamantly said multiple times in the last three beach parking workshops and in the multiple meetings that we're adamantly against the boot process. There's even a clause in the contract that they're going to fine the vendor $300 if they do wrongfully boot a car. So a lot of those issues that you guys were speaking about, I agree that is very unfortunate for a clerical, clerical error, typo, when you're entering your information into the system, and therefore they got, they got their vehicles booted. But after they showed their proof of residency, they didn't have to pay any fees, but they were still inconvenienced, and that's one of the many reasons why we don't want to use the boot, boot program. So also, a couple of the facts. The previous, the first workshop, it was 10 people spoke, six of them were non-residents. I do think that needs to be addressed as well. When I was running for office a year ago, I talked to many thousands of residents, and this was one of the things that they said that was affecting them. They can no longer utilize a service. So this is, to your point, sir, the problem is, is they can no longer utilize a service that their tax dollars are going to maintain and upkeep when surrounding cities have gone to other programs. And you could obviously see the increase of, of people coming to our beaches and not taking care of the beaches like residents do. So that's, that's an issue. I think if you say there's no issue, that's, that's not really accurate either. So, like I said, I'm a surfer. I grew up surfing. I love, check the waves. You travel up and down the beaches, and you surf where the waves are good. But the beaches on Ogaliqah is way south, all the way to Indian Atlantic, are still county beaches. So people can come over the bridge, and then they can utilize those beaches. This program preserves the opportunity for residents who pay their tax dollars to utilize the beach. And like we previously stated, we have to do something. This is no cost to the city. Two years, we can reevaluate it. But I think it's a, it's a very good product, and I think the city, the city should be proud of it.
We're having council discussion right
We're having council discussion right now, man. Sorry.
So I also want to, I do appreciate the fact that you, you're trying to get a good judge of what all residents want, but like I stated earlier, we've already been doing this for eight months. We've had three workshops, total of six meetings where this was on the agenda. That would also create time and money to, to do a voting process. Some would have to tally the votes, and then we'd have to speak on it again, and it would just delay this, delay this issue. That's why we didn't do the survey originally, because the cost to the city and also the work, workload. So I feel like we've done our research and it's a good product for the citizens that they can be proud of. And I think we should just move forward with the first ordinance reading tonight and approve it.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other comments? I'd like to make a motion.
I don't have any comments. Frank, do you have comments?
I made my comments.
Okay. Anybody else?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading ordinance of number 2024-11, which establishes fees and penalties for non-residents paid beach parking.
Second, the motion.
Second.
I'm gonna give it to Hamilton.
I'm gonna give it to Hamilton.
Give it to Boone.
All right, I have, I have a.
You're counting.
Yeah. A motion by, a motion by Councilmember Dyer and a second by Councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Turn your hand.
Move on to, excuse me, folks. Move on to item number 10. It's resolution number 760, which is noise ordinance, I'm sorry, noise measurement process. This is consider adopting resolution number 760, establishing a specific process for the measurement of noise ordinance under ordinance number 2024-03. I'll read the, read it into the record. A resolution of the city of Indian Harbor Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing certain standards for the measuring of noise pursuant to Article 2, Chapter 8, Section 8-11 of the Code of Ordinances of the city, providing an effective date. City Manager Coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The essence of this resolution is that when, um, police department receives a complaint of violation of the noise ordinance, a police officer shall measure the noise lever, level for a consecutive three-minute period. The measurement will be recorded on the police officer's body camera. A violation will be deemed to have occurred if three readings exceed the threshold within the three-minute interval, or if a majority of the three minutes exceed the decimal level. Chief Butler and I developed this in a way that would meet the needs of the residents and also the safety of his officers. Staff recommends approval of resolution number 760.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in council have any comments? If we don't, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution number 760.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Dyer, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number 11, award of contract for police department replacement vehicles. Uh, this is to consider awarding a piggyback contract not to exceed $99,000 to purchase two replacement police department vehicles and authorization to transfer the balance of the fiscal year '25 budget, project budget to the city manager's contingency account. City Manager Coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, the FY25 budget contains $114,300 to replace two vehicles. Uh, the city's code of ordinance permits the city to piggyback on contracts awarded by other agencies. Staff secured bids for two replacement vehicles via the Florida Sheriff's Association light vehicle contract, one for a marked, to replace a marked patrol car purchased in 2019 and an administrative vehicle from 2011 at a cost of $98,562, resulting in a budgetary savings of approximately $16,000. Additionally, as outlined in the memo attached from Chief Butler, planned vehicle equipment purchases totaled $29,600 and change, resulting in a savings of $6,000. That purchase will be, uh, approved administratively as it's within my purchasing authority, but I brief you on that for transparency. Therefore, staff recommends city council award a piggyback contract not to exceed $99,000 to purchase two replacement police department vehicles and authorize staff to transfer the balance of the FY25 project budget to the city manager's contingency account.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in council have any questions?
I just have one question. Would the old vehicles then be sold? What happens to the old ones we're replacing?
Uh, we will be selling two of the oldest vehicles in the police department.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'd hear, I'd entertain a motion. Hamilton, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Motion to award of a contract for police department replacement vehicles as described by, uh, City Manager Coffee.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Boone, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number 12, authorization to dispose of surplus fire department vehicle. This is consider, to consider classifying the fire department's 1995 E1 pumper truck as surplus and authorizing staff to sell via an online auction. City Manager Coffee.
Uh, back in FY22, the city budgeted funds to replace the 1995 E1 fire engine. Uh, replacement unit was received late last fiscal year and is now in service. The 95 fire engine is no longer in service and, um, per description included in the agenda memo by Chief Lewis is beyond the useful, uh, economic life of, for our use. And, um, newer vehicle has much improved safety features, um, long-term maintenance, um, is cost prohibitive. Therefore, uh, staff recommends the city council deem this vehicle surplus and authorize staff to sell the fire engine via online site. Staff recommend, estimates, estimates based on prior auctions that, um, we could see somewhere between $25,000 and $50,000 in the sale of the asset. Um, staff recommends the council, um, declare said vehicle surplus and authorize its sale.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in council have any questions?
A motion to sell the fire department vehicle via online auction.
Second.
And that would include the council finding it uneconomical, inefficient, and serve no useful function.
Second.
Okay. So I have, who made the motion?
Frank seconded.
Gotcha. All right. A motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, second by Councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next is public forum. I have three speaker cards here. Please come up, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Uh, first one is Nina Shea. He left. He wanted to talk about you. I think sure he did. All right. Next is Nick Kaplevich. Only took about six months, but I finally got your number. I'll screw it up next time, don't worry.
Nick Kaplevich, 20 Navajo Circle. Uh, Mr. Gerton brought up a, uh, topic that I think we need to discuss, and that's the golf cart issue. Um, I see no reason why we shouldn't just copy what satellite's doing and allow residents to register carts, uh, under the city. It's not stopping anyone from doing anything because low-speed vehicles, you can still register with a state, get a license plate on it, you're still going to see them around. They're still golf carts. They're exactly the same form, fit, and function. They do exactly the same thing. It's just for some reason, we just don't want to allow them on our streets, and we're missing out on a revenue opportunity and also just an easier way for residents. It costs, it costs residents a lot less money if we just come to the city to register our carts. The insurance is a lot cheaper that way. So, uh, I think it'd be beneficial to the residents, and then you could put some, uh, rules and structure around, you know, people driving golf carts on sidewalks, which they shouldn't be doing anyway, but, uh, apparently that needs to be reminded to people. So, anyway, I would like to see something done. If you could do something with an ordinance, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Boone, would you bear to opine on whether we could get to an ordinance for golf carts as opposed to low-speed vehicles?
Well, the state statute specifically regulates what we can and cannot do with the, the golf carts. Um, we've, we've analyzed satellite beaches, and in my opinion, there are some issues with theirs that if this council wanted to do that, we should not adopt. But, you know, golf carts are highly regulated by the, the state in what we can and cannot do, and we can't deviate from what the state allows. And unfortunately, we can't impose additional restrictions above and beyond what the state will allow us to do. Um, so that, that's, has been the council's concern in the past, but, you know, we have new members now.
Okay, just thought it'd be good to get your opinion out there.
We got another speaker.
Several more speakers. All right.
I, uh, comment on that real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
I agree, that is a good, uh, good talking point that we should potentially visit in the future. Um, just, I was planning on bringing that up after the new year, but, you know, now that you mentioned it, those are all very good points and also keeping the revenue in the city and then expanding to the potential, you know, holiday golf cart gatherings that generates a tremendous amount of revenue for the city as well. Um, I, I agree also with Deputy Mayor Gerton about the speed limit on South Patrick should be lowered to 35. And, um, in the future, those are definitely something we should, we should look into.
Yeah, I mean, you know, i- if we can get there and it's comfortably legal to do so with an ordinance, I'm all ears on something like that. Okay.
I would also agree, I'd also agree that 100% of our city has, you have to have availability to go ahead and use a golf cart, not just in their own driveway.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, we can go deep on this, but not really tonight, uh, but there are a lot of restrictions as far as, you know, South Patrick Drive as it is right now, you cannot operate a, you can't even operate a low-speed vehicle on, on South Patrick Drive. Um, and there's, there's limits as to what you can do. Um, you know, for instance, if you were to try to, I'm just going to give this real brief, just as an example, one thing, even on any one, technically speaking, I mean, you can get from our back roads into bicentennial beach, but there, I shouldn't use that as an example, but there's, there's areas where you can't, you wouldn't be able to cross the road because there's no receiving road on the opposite side directly across from you. So you legally cannot drive, again, down South Patrick Drive in particular, that's one of the main areas that's an issue, but you just can't do it. You can't do it on O'Gallie Boulevard as well. So there's a lot to work through on something like this, and it is, that is a concern because if we adopt something, then, you know, we, we have, it's a problem now just with low-speed vehicles, but I think that's why you're seeing some of these, uh, LSVs going down South Patrick Drive because they, they purchased them and then they figure, well, I've got to get from here to here, so they just go ahead and drive down the road. Or, you know, just as bad, they go down the, the bike path. So, um, certainly for further discussion, I think, uh, we can open that back up again and see if we can get to a, a finish line on that in the right way. Okay. Anybody else? Yeah. Uh, next speaker, Lee McElroy. About beach parking.
Lee McElroy, went to two Algonquin Terrace, and I just wanted to share, I've been participating with that topic since it started in March, and here we are in November. Um, the room has emptied tonight, but this should be a reminder that it's important to residents to not participate only at the beginning and only at the end, because you miss the middle. And the middle is where the work was happening. For residents that don't know, there should be a strong reminder that these meetings have been recorded for months. And even though you don't see our faces here, we watch these meetings. That's how I get information, that's how I get facts, so that I'm operating off of actual information and not inaccurate information. I think tonight was a situation that evolved out of misinformation in emails and social media posts. And I want to thank all of you seated here for doing the work in the middle and taking the time to use information and feedback from residents to even change your minds. And I have seen that happen over these few months. I would have loved to have seen it happen sooner, but I'll take it. And again, if y'all would just remind your friends that are residents, these meetings are recorded. Don't show up at the end and throw a fit when you can participate all along the way. And you can reach out by email or phone and be an active participant, and don't just stir the pot at the very end when we're trying to move forward and do something productive. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to add that we, you know, the, not only on the beach parking issue, but the noise ordinance, multiple workshops, multiple meetings on that. Um, we're, I think we're a pretty patient group here, and we do like to vet everything thoroughly, and we understand the difference between something that's a, maybe a minor resolution that's getting voted upon, or something more significant and major is paid beach parking. So those are things that require more effort, more middle ground work than others, and we're not afraid to put in the, put in the time on these issues. So, um, that said, we can't always make everybody happy, that's for sure. Um, but that's part of our job is to, you know, make some of the more difficult decisions that maybe people aren't happy with, some people aren't happy with. So.
I have a comment on that real quick. I, I, I do think that she makes a very valid point. I think the city can, um, look into making a better effort of actually getting the accurate information out to the residents on a more frequent, frequent basis on different platforms. So I think, uh, we should look, look into that as a city on how, how we could potentially do that, because I think, I agree that would have potentially, you know, avoided some of the false information online.
And I, and I think one of the things we're trying to do, and we've been trying to do as a process, is, um, we're trying to gather people's emails, um, so their email addresses so that we can send out notifications that way, because it is a bit challenging. We, you know, we, we certainly publish the required public meeting notices as were required to by law. Uh, we have a Facebook page, uh, but, you know, Harbor Highlights is there, but, you know, that's such a delayed publication, it's very difficult for us to get any advance notice of anything significant in that. It's not a great information source for these types of things. But I think we're working towards, I agree with you on that. I, I think whatever we can do to move towards a, you know, notification process that's more efficient, um, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but, you know, the email stuff is, is a good, good start to that. Um, but yes, I think if we can come up with something, if we can get a, a database of residents in the city and get their emails, that's the, you know, to me is the ideal way of going about doing. their emails, that's the, you know, to me is the ideal way of going about doing this. All right.
I agree with the email solution. I've been thinking about sending out a survey, that was $6,000 right there. You know, if we had had emails, we could have gotten our answers a lot sooner and earlier accurately, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, John Hume. Did I print her name right?
I just wanted to say about the golf cart ordinance. We allow low-speed vehicles. When that ordinance was developed all those many years ago, it was researched and vetted, and it really was the best decision to make. I don't believe that golf carts, the difference, a lot of people don't know because they look alike, but the low-speed vehicles do require having a license plate, windshields, and lights, and other important safety features, and we've all seen pretty young people driving around the neighborhoods in these golf carts, and it can be quite scary. I'm frightened for some of them that I've seen, but I really, another thing too, I want to say, as far as when you say satellite beach has their own program for permitting just a golf cart, that also takes more of city employees' work and time and effort. And one thing that you will find, that city employees do cost a lot of money by the time you pay their salary and their benefits, and we have always operated with the fewest employees of any city of our size, and so I can truly say with all my heart, before you consider going from a low-speed vehicle that is just the best way to go, and if you consider golf carts so you can have a parade, you can have a low-speed vehicle parade at Christmas too, if you like, and I just want you to really think carefully before making that change. And then I also want to say thank you to my family and friends who supported me. I meant to say that earlier, but I got kind of emotional, so thank you, everybody, and I wanted to personally, publicly congratulate Susan Rumi on her win, so thank you all. And I also wanted to mention how great this council is, and it was such an honor to work with you, and I'm sorry I got choked up earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, John. This is gonna be challenging. Hope I get this right. Dan?
Well, thank you. I'll let you, thank you. Okay, I met Susan and Miss Hume at election day. Anyways, if you look right across the street, there's a little yellow flag out there that says natural gas, and that's where it stops. I live at 1241 Seminole Drive, you used to live across the street from me, and we don't have natural gas. I looked at Florida City Gas, they wanted to charge me $18,000 to put gas in, to run it from there to there. Now, if I pay $18,000, anybody in my neighborhood can hook up for free. So what they propose is that we go around with some kind of petition, not a petition, but who wants to get natural gas? Then I can feed this data back to Florida, Florida City Gas, and the $18,000 figure will shrink. And then whatever we come up with, you guys will match, so I'm, I'm good with that, so. I'm kidding. But anyways, what I'm looking for is someone from the council, give me a form I can go to my neighbors with, and then also, anybody from the council, you want to meet your voters, come on with me. We can go door to door, get some signatures, just like you did when you first ran, you came to my house, I put your sign up and all that kind of good stuff.
You did, thank you.
So.
And you gave me a clipboard.
Yeah, I gave you a clipboard. Anyways, I do contribute, you know, I'm a good guy. I'm a former student government president when I was a junior in high school, so I know what government's all about. So, what do you think? Could you guys help me out with this?
I think we can certainly look into it. I think that it might be something, look into possibly contacting Florida City Gas to see what it would take from a city effort side of things, to maybe prompt them to start extending gas service, you know, hopefully throughout the city would be wonderful, but I, I know that won't happen right away.
Efficient.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So, we can certainly, let's, we'll check on it from the city side of it, and we'll see what we can, what we can come up with.
I'll be in touch with Susan. Susan, contact me. All right, cool.
Noreen Zimba? Zimba? Noreen, sorry. The bottom part of your end didn't.
I was running out of ink, I think there's a lot of people using it tonight. Okay, yeah, Noreen Zimba, 1113 Stephen Patrick Avenue, Indian Harbor Beach. I just wanted to talk about the golf cart, because that does kind of tie in with the parking situation. I was talking to someone today, and she was saying how she had driven her golf cart down to, I guess, Millenia, or, yeah, Millennium Park, you know, to, to, you know, I guess she was gonna park there or something. This is something I don't know if anyone's taken into consideration, but people want, it sounds like people want to be able to take their golf carts and drive them across A1A and go to the beach. This would be extremely dangerous. I don't know if you have thought about that. I mean, yes, you have those yellow lights going for pedestrians, but people coming with a golf cart, a motorized vehicle, it's gonna be a bad situation. I don't know what the intent is of having golf carts competing with cars, because that's what I'm looking at with, on our local roads.
Okay, so legally speaking, I mean, they can, I don't know, steal your thunder, but if the posted speed limit is 35 miles per hour or less, then you can operate a low-speed vehicle on the roadway, A1A would be one of them. What, what, I mean, so we, we can't do anything about that if it's a actual low-speed vehicle with the tags on the windshield and it's registered as proper plate and insurance and all that. The one thing I do, it may be contrary to what you're talking about here, but the one thing I do want to explore, and I was going to get in touch with you, City Manager Coffee, about is potentially creating, see if we can squeeze out some space for creating a few spaces at Millennium and Bicentennial Beach Park for golf carts themselves. Because they're parking, I, you know, they go there and they'll park up in little areas where they can, and grass areas and all, and I think they, they may have gotten some tickets issued, I'm not sure, but I think there's potentially ways to make that happen with a stabilized surface that's out of the parking lot and keep them in a safe area, you know, without them getting sighted, so it's something I would like to look into.
So you might want to provide a safe way for them to cross. I don't know how that's gonna even happen.
It's the, the issue, so for, on A1A, using the beach parks as an example, they're legally allowed to drive down A1A.
With the cars?
Yes, they are, and I don't agree with it sincerely. When I see them, it's a little bit, you know, it's a little concerning, especially when they're loaded up with little kids or something like that, you know, but the law is the law, and it is a state law, it's not anything that we have, so.
Yeah, I just want.
If you want to speak a little more, you can, because I stole some.
No, I just, after talking with somebody today, that's why I wanted to bring it up now, because that issue was being talked about now, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's it for the speakers. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.